Good evening, everyone. We are going to call the order of the City Council for Tuesday, January 17th, 2023, to order. And we're going to begin tonight with prayer. And trying to think, I think, Alderman Jones, you might be up. You good with that?
Yeah.
I think Alderman Prude handled it last time.
Let us, let us pray. New year, new year. Father, we thank you tonight. Father, we always thank you tonight for your grace and for your mercy. You've allowed us to come into a new year. And for that, again, we just say thank you. Tonight, oh God, we ask that you will continue to bless each and every one here under the sound of my voice. We thank you for the good, we thank you for the bad, but most importantly, we thank you for your son, Jesus the Christ. We ask tonight, Lord, as we get ready to take care of the people's business, that you will create an atmosphere, that we will continue to work together as a, as one, to be able to do better for our city and for our community at large. We ask right now, God, you will continue to bless our mayor, all the aldermen, all of the, of city officials, all of our firefighters, and all, and our, and our police officers, and those that continue to do the work of the people. We ask tonight, oh God, that you would give us a vision of victory, that we will be able to lead and guide this city of great constituents. We ask, oh God, tonight, that you will have your will and your way. In the master's name of Jesus, we pray. Let us say amen.
Amen.
If I could ask the, the 10 U cheerleaders, um, you, I believe you are our national champions. So if the 10 year, 10 U cheerleaders, if you would come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Cheerleaders.
10 U's?
Everybody wants.
You don't have to be bashful. If you come on up here, well, have you come up to the front of the stage here? Can you come right up top here?
Keep walking, keep walking, keep walking.
There you go.
Okay. We're going to have you as enthusiastically as you cheer, we're going to have you do the Pledge of Allegiance for us, okay? And we'll follow your lead.
The Pledge of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have you go back to your seats, and we'll have you back up here very quickly. Next, we're going to move into item four, and that is public comments. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal attacks upon council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussion of matters which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. Mary Archie?
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, I'm here tonight with a heavy heart. The way I was treated at a meeting. I walked in on a meeting that was open to the public. I am a citizen of the Kankakee. I've lived here for many years. I pay taxes. When I walked in a meeting, I was asked, why are you here? An open meeting. I said, is there a problem? Is it a military secret? As you want to know why I'm here, who invited you? I said, is there a problem? I said, why are you here? I said, I'm here because I'm just being nosy, see what you're doing. So she backed up. So I went to the chair of the organization. I said, I don't like the way I was treated. And the chair told me, Mary, don't make a big deal out of it. You cannot tell me how to feel. And I don't appreciate that. Don't make a big deal out of it because I feel the same way. Why are, why were you there? What? This is 2023. And you're going to talk to me, disrespect me. Let me tell you something. This is not my first rodeo. I have seen 70-plus sunrises and sunsets. You don't know my story until you've heard my glory. Okay? You don't talk to Mary Archie like that. And in the future, don't call me Mary. Call me Ms. Archie. And I'll call you Attorney Mr. Barry. I don't appreciate how I was talked to. Would you talk to your mother like that? I have two children, eight grandchildren, two great, uh, three great-grandchildren. They don't have the privilege to disrespect me, neither do you. So I'm telling you, because he's under you, and the lady that, he defended her, knowing that she's wrong. But it's okay. Don't get offended, Mary. You will have the opportunity to tell Mary Archie about my feelings. Because you are not in charge of me. God is. But you know what I did? I went and prayed for both of them. I asked God to change their hearts. She was so easy to come up and say something. A Latino woman stepped in, and a black woman walked in. An open meeting, and you have the audacity to come to us and ask us, what are you doing here? Who invited you? Mayor, that is wrong. I can't believe this is 2023, and people are still doing the same old thing to black people, white privilege. I'm tired of it. Seventy-some years, I've told this way. And it's still happening. Not to Mary Archie. I demand an apology. You may not want to. You may not mean it from your heart. But when you speak to me like that, that's something from your heart. You ain't just woke up. Respect is something you earn. You don't go to bed at night and wake up, and the next morning, you've got respect. I don't appreciate it at all. I'm a black woman. I'm an educated woman. And I don't take that. You better check what you're doing.
Next, we'll move on to item five, and that's roll call. We'll begin with 5A, City Council.
Brown.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Navarez.
Here.
Marzak.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Ossenga.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Malone Marshall.
Present.
Prue.
Here.
14 present, zero absent.
We do have a quorum. Next, item 5B, department heads.
Passwater.
Here.
LaRode.
Here.
Cooper.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Lopez.
Here.
Pigash.
Nelson.
Here.
Beasley.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Roswell.
Brewer Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item six, the minutes.
For Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve, Mayor Curtis.
We have a motion from Alderman Ossenga to approve the minutes from Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Crawford. Is there any questions, changes, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Okay. At this time, we're going to do item 6.5, and that is the former 13A.
It's a resolution celebrating the historic accomplishments of the Kankakee Eastside Bulldogs Cheerleaders.
Okay. So if I can have all the cheerleaders come forward, Clerk Gaul and myself, we're going to hand out some stuff for you and assist you. If we can have some grace for Clerk Gaul tonight, there's a lot of names here, a lot of people to announce, and so it's never an easy task to, to always get names right. So please bear with us as we try to do this. And all the cheerleaders, if you'll come forward, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution for us. Celebrating the historic accomplishments of the Kankakee Eastside Bulldogs Cheerleaders. Whereas the Kankakee Eastside Bulldogs Cheerleaders marked the 2022 season with four teams placing nationally in the United Youth Football League, national competition in Tampa Bay, Florida, for the second year in a row. The extraordinary performances by each and every member of the, of these teams is a clear indication of their outstanding talent, teamwork, dedication, and perseverance. And whereas the Eastside Cheerleaders 10 and Under Team placed first in the nation out of 16 teams at the competition, and was awarded the national championship. This team was coached by Yulika Young, head, head coach, with her assistant, Mila Moore, and junior coach, Kenasia Chandler. The team was composed of the following members: Janique Barlow, Jashari Boyd, Canaria Chandler, Kamira Finley, Brianna Hines, Harlem Hines, Dakota Ivy, Christian Jennings, Kailia Jones, Imani Landingham, London McNeely, Amia Petty, Jordney Smith, Mackenzie Taylor, and Robrianna Thurman. And whereas the Eastside Cheerleaders 12 and Under placed second in the nation out of 14 teams at the competition, and was designated national champions. This team was coached by Imprint Collins, head coach, her assistants, Zunia Smith, and junior coaches, Denariana Fisher and Sayaria Hicks. The team was composed of the following members: Janaya Adams, Jeriah Dodson, Lanaya Johnson, Kayla Gordon, Tiana Jackson, Soraya Jones, Malia Johnson, Kalis Reed, Micaiah Robishaw, Ayana Spears, Tayla Tools, and Teresa Willingham. And whereas the Eastside Cheerleaders 14 and Under placed fourth in the nation out of 14 teams at the competition, and was coached by Simone West, head coach, and her assistant, Madison Lambert, and junior coaches, Brooklyn Hardy and Trinity Noble. The team was comprised, composed of the following members: Arianna Brown, Jordan Buckner, Jania Carpenter, Nia Crockett, Arianna Hammond, Zariah Ivy, Anaya James, Lenique Lillard, Malia Love, Zion Marshall, Alexis Sherman, Ricola Speed, Jamaya Tally, Rhianna Tally, Danielle Thomas, and Erin Wills. Whereas at least, last but not least, the Eastside Cheerleaders 8 and Under Team placed sixth in the nation out of 14 teams, and was coached by Jaslyn Kennedy and Marganel Thurman, head coaches, and their, their assistant, Bernice Thurman. The team was composed of the following members: Kylie Bender, Savaya Clark, Madison English, Kaylee Ewing, Gianna Hines, Talia Moore, Jaquila Roundry, Cyreal Smith, Sanaya Walker, Jada Washington, Jasmine Wright, and, and Leila Wright. And whereas the Kankakee Eastside Bulldogs Cheerleaders, which is directed by Veronica Irish and Verlon Jordan, together with their coaches and parents, deserve special recognition for their excellent qualities in guidance, support, and motivation of the teams. It is hereby resolved that Ms. Mayor Christopher W. Curtis and the Kankakee City Council do recognize and celebrate with the Kankakee Eastside Bulldogs Cheerleaders for their remarkable season. The achievements of all competitors and coaches have brought great honor to the city of Kankakee, adopted this 7th day of January 2023.
Motion to approve.
All right. Alderman Brown's beaten to the punch here. I like that. So we have a motion to approve the resolution from Alderman Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Congratulations, young lady. Is there any of you that would like to speak, or coach, or anything, that would like to say any few words? I, I do want to say one thing. I thought, it was, it was nice to follow on Facebook your, your events and everything that you were doing down in Florida. And I think why your accomplishments of the cheering are something that has to be honored, I think what's more important, was exciting to see from back home in the community, was the ability that you got out and were able to enjoy some things, like it looked like you went to see some dolphins. You went, looked like you spent some time at the beach, looked like you guys spent some time in fancy restaurants and hotels and stuff. So those are the life experiences that you're going to take with you. And I'm sure, more importantly, that you're going to take with you. It's your parents, your guardians, your grandparents, everybody that sits there and says, that's the excitement that they see you get to live, those fruits of life. And for that, I think, is the most important thing about what you did, gaining life experience, learning that there is more than just the city of Kankakee, Kankakee County, and the state of Illinois. There's a lot more to see out there. And you get to do that, where a lot of people don't get that opportunity, sometimes in a lifetime. And for you to be able to do it at the age of 14 years, 13, 10, 8 years old, is a big deal. So remember those as your memories. And we're excited that we've had you up here for a second year. And we hope to invite you back again next year for some further accolades as you guys pursue your achievements. Thank you. Anybody want to speak? Quick cheer? You going to give us quick cheer?
Yeah, cheer, cheer. Come on, guy. Go ahead, baby.
Nothing? Ready? We're, we're putting you on the spot. We'll give a, give a slight moment here, and then we'll get back into business.
Donna. Sit next to Paige. That's his right hair, right hair woman. That's how I leave it like that. You know, she used to work for Clark in Casey's suicide. She'd been many years with Clark.
Okay, we are going to move on to item 7A, under petitions.
PB 2022-12-1, an ordinance approving a map amendment to rezone the property from R1, single-family residential, to R2, two-family residential, for 320 to 388, Ted Mart Court, even addresses only, and 2821 to 2831 Cranbrook Street.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman, this went before the planning commission, and was recommended to come to City Council, correct?
It is. It is. I'll be at the end of this, you guys, in the first 10 minutes, so I'll be there. So this is some property on the east side of Ted Mart Court between Divine and Cranbrook. They are a series of seven existing two-unit buildings that are all currently zoned, single-family R1. However, they've been that way since the 70s at least. We had a realtor actually contact us about one of them. We talked about the status of it being legal nonconforming, that we're going to have challenges with the sale in terms of getting loans and, and that kind of thing. So rather than just doing one like we've done in the past, I said, let's just do the whole strip. It's going to be more consistent from a zoning perspective. And I see no reason not to. While the planning board did hear and approved a couple of minor variations, the units were slightly smaller, like 950 square feet rather than 1,000 square feet that they're required by the code. And we needed a couple of side yard setbacks just so they could be able to rebuild these units. Planning board approved those variants as well, as well. And they voted five with one abstention to approve the rezoning from R1 to R2, to be consistent with what's currently there.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance?
Motion to suspend the rule and if you're the passage of this ordinance.
We have a motion from Alderman Brown. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Is there, is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage?
Motion to place the ordinance on final read and pass.
We have a motion from Alderman Brown. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Is there any questions or comments about the ordinance doing this rezoning? Alderman Brown?
I just want to make sure that people know, because we approved this ordinance, we're trying to get, get all the commercial stuff together, all the R2 together, and all the R1s together. So we're not opening up a door where we're trying to put our, our R1, our R2 back into R1. This is just cleanup, what we know that need to be cleaned up for insurance purposes, because if something happens to those building, I don't think they can rebuild. And that's, 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 that's a liability to the city for me. So this is very important that we clean those kind of things up.
These are all duplexes, so they're all two units?
Correct. Yes.
Which should have an R2 zoning, so. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
I'm just keen to avoid a conflict.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Okay, ordinance passes. Next is item 7B.
PB 2022-12-2, an ordinance approving a map amendment to rezone property from C2 Service Commercial to R1, single-family residential, at 2020 and 2030 West Station Street.
Okay. Again, we've dealt with these quite a bit before. In fact, I think a neighboring property. Mr. Hoffman, can you walk us through this one?
Yes, Mayor. And you're absolutely right. Last year, we rezoned 2040 West Station, which was a home, two residential, it was zoned C2 Commercial. These two properties are just immediately to the east of that. They are also currently zoned C2 Commercial, but also have single-family homes that have been there for probably 100 years, something like that. The one in the middle, 2020, no, 2030 contacted our office and actually applied to rezone. I decided to go ahead and include the one immediately to the east of that as well, just so that we could have that whole segment between the alley and McKinley Street consistently zoned to R1, since that's what's been there for a long time. Planning board concurred with that. They also granted, like the last case, a couple of variances, just so that those structures could be rebuilt in the future if need be, as they currently exist. So again, the recommendation from the planning board is to approve the rezoning from C2 to R1.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for passage of this ordinance?
Oh, move them.
We have a motion from Alderman Crawford. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Ossenga. Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Okay, ordinance passes. Next is item 8, communications. We have none tonight. We'll move on to item 9, standing committees. Item 9A.
Economic Development Committee for October 24, 2022.
Alderman Cobb, would you like to walk us through this?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
The regular meeting of Economic Development Committee of Kankakee City Council was called to order on Monday, October 24th. There was a quorum present. There were no public
to order on Monday, October 24th. There was a quorum present. There were no public comments. The minutes from July 14th, 2022, in August, were approved. There was a presentation by Scott Black, a representative of Civic Servtiff Management, presented information about his company and grant in Tiff Management Software. Additionally, Nathan Hydner of Ricky Rocket's Fuel Centers and a representative of Illinois Works reported on the status of their project at exit 312 and everything seems to be moving forward. Ms. Brewer Watson then provided the executive director's report. She stated that the ECDA had received three new businesses licensed, applications in the last month, and two ribbon cuttings are scheduled for November. Mayor Curtis opened discussion concerning Project Catalyst and Project Vatican. Yeah, I did pronounce that right. The two projects of Jay Jeffers Company stated that we need to make some decisions about the city's financial support. Mayor Watson. Ms. Brewer Watson provided various project.
Get promoted fast, right?
Congratulations on your promotion. Would you like to come up and have a seat?
Ms. Brewer Watson, our ECDA Director, not Mayor. She stated that she intended to bring proposals to the committee for property acquisition along the riverfront. Kankakee Works is still in legal review upon a motion by Alderwoman Lewis and seconded by Alderwoman Swanson to committee adjourn via voice vote.
Thank you, Alderman Cobb's.
Sorry about the shot.
It's always good to have a little humor every now and then, so. Okay, next we'll move into item 10, report of officers.
Item A is city of Kankakee bills on the amount of $249,506.29.
Is there a motion for the approval of the report of officers for the city of Kankakee?
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to approve the report of officers. Let's ensure that we have enough money to pay the bills in the amount of $249,506.29.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Osenga. Is there any questions or comments regarding the report of officers for the city of Kankakee? Alderwoman Johnson?
I have two. Check number, I believe, 370 for Schuyler Avenue Properties for $4,100.
That is, so that is for January and February rent. That's the new lease that we entered into for the fire station behind the police department here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
They had invoiced the January bill for the higher amount. We'd actually reduced the fee a little bit for January 1st. So we told them to correct that and we just told them to do January and February at the same time. So that's two months rents. I'll take it through February 28th, but they had billed us, I think, like $2170 and it's supposed to be $2,060. So we amended it and just said, let's go ahead. Since that was due at the last meeting, we pulled that one off the table and said we'd do it this meeting and add February in.
Thank you. And then, check 80379, the University of Illinois for $11,690.
Is that chief pass water?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
I, but I abstain as the check 80352 to Katie Coffee &amp; Tea Company and 80362 to Piggish Engineering.
Thank you. Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Okay, report of officers for city of Kankakee passes. Next is item 10B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills on the amount of $608,544.89.
Is there a motion for the approval of the report of officers for Environmental Services Utility?
I still move.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Alderman Prude. Any questions or comments regarding these bills? Seeing none? Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
I, but I abstain as the check 32968 to Gordon Electric Supply and 32990 to Piggish Engineering. What a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Okay, report of officers for BSU are approved. Next we'll move into unfinished business and item 11A.
PB 2022-11-3, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to operate a halfway house, Christian training and sober living facility at 152 South Greenwood Avenue by Lasam Ministries and Mark Jones. And this is second reading.
This was on our last first reading, two weeks ago at city council. And if you don't mind, Mr. Hoffman, can you just give us a quick review of planning commission's findings on that one, if you don't mind?
Yes, Mayor. We held the public hearing on this case. It was only positive comments that we heard at the public hearing. The planning board did recommend approval with a number of conditions. I think I summarized those last time, but the big picture, two items are compliance with all building code and Kankakee Fire Department Life Safety Code provisions. The Fire Department will actually be determining occupancy on this facility and they will be required to provide appropriate alarms and sprinklers and those kinda things for the facility. And then, we also required them to provide two parking spaces out back off the alley, 'cause there currently aren't any parking available on this particular property, so.
Just to give a quick overview too, this was a entity that we did approve, probably about 18 months ago, over in the Mary Crest subdivision area. And it did not get off the ground there due to some landlord issues of not renewing the lease or continuing the lease on. So this is a operation that we had approved before. And when I talked about before, we talked about different shelters and facilities. I said that we have about five in the city of Kankakee. When I referenced those five, this was one that I was including in there because that we had approved it earlier about 18 months ago. So, it's before you tonight in a new location, but the same operation, but in a new location. So we have it on second reading. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So move.
We have a motion from Alderman Prude. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there any questions or comments? Alderman Crawford?
Thank you, Mayor. Has the code department or building department and fire department been through this building yet? Give them some type of idea on what they need to do?
I know the fire department has been in contact with them. I don't know if you've actually been through the building yet or not, but.
Yeah, we've been in contact with the gentleman over there and we've been actually to the building. We're doing preliminary walkthrough and then we'll do another walkthrough once they get complete construction.
Perfect, thank you.
Alderman Marzak?
Refresh my memory, when it was going on St. Joseph's, was it a halfway house or was it a shelter?
It was a similar operation. It was a halfway house.
It was a halfway.
It was similar, okay.
Am I correct in that, Mr. Hoffman?
That's correct, yes.
Yes, okay. Any other questions? Seeing none? Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Nope.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
13 ayes, one nay, zero abstentions.
Ordinance passes. Next we'll move on to item 12, new business, item 12A.
An ordinance repealing chapter 31 taxation, Article 8, annual motor vehicle sticker tax of the Kankakee Municipal Code.
I think everybody's been waiting for this one tonight, I think. I joked, I'm like, okay, how are we gonna let Alderman pick who wants to make motions and everything, but we'll just go. We're gonna start with, is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance?
So move.
Okay, I'm gonna start with, I heard a motion from Alderman Cobb's.
I move to suspend the rules that interfere with the passage of this motion.
Okay, and is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, boy, this is like, okay, we have a second from Alderman Navarez. Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage?
So move, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb's?
Second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. At this point, is there any questions or comments? I was trying to find out if there was a way to do a unanimous vote, but we'll keep it, we'll keep it proper, so. Alderman Barron?
Mayor, just for clarification, so this ordinance would repeal it as of today? So the, even the stickers that exist that have been issued?
No, this ordinance as of June 30th.
Right. Is that affected?
Stickers are still required through June 30th, because the people that did buy them last year, everyone still should be liable or should be responsible to have a sticker for this current fiscal year, so. But I believe when I read this, I thought it said as of.
I thought so too.
This is not going to be immediately effective, but we can do it subject to modification to a later effective date. I guess I would ask for a modification of the motion to add a, this becomes effective as of June 30th.
I do think, 'cause it's fair that people that did buy these last year should also be responsible through June 30th, 'cause if one did it, the entire city should be responsible for it. So, in discussing with different people and everything, it was always the intention that this is still in place through June 30th. You still need to require to have a June sticker come July 1. It is, June 30th, it's repeated. So, we would need a motion to amend that language.
I'd like to make a motion to amend my previous motion to June 30th.
That the repeal would be effective?
The repeal will be effective June 30th.
June 30th, okay.
And I will second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to amend it with a June 30th. And I think that's really the only fair way, quite frankly, which means there's still people, if you do not have, I'm gonna be very clear about, if you do not have a sticker, you are still subject to getting a ticket between now and June 30th. Again, it's not fair that 70% of the population or 90% of the population got stickers and 10 get away because councils decided to take away, so. We're not trying to harm anybody, but we're also trying to be fairness with everybody going forward, so. Is there any other questions or comments? I would like to say thank you to the council, because this is something that everybody has wanted to see happen. This is through your diligent work of keeping the financials in good shape, the budget committee, all the different committees with the department heads. This is doable, because we're in a solid financial position right now. We are watching the expenses very diligently through the department heads, through the compterels' office, through the aldermen. The income is coming in more and we, in speaking with comptroller Kubal, we feel like we're in a position right now that we can absorb this and not raise any additional taxes on, when I say additional fees and different things that we're trying to do for the city residents at this time, keep our tax rate stable or going down. And so I don't think this will harm the city in any way going forward. So it's an exciting night for the city council, so. Any other questions? All right. Should we suspend, should we just take our time with this, or should we go and roll? Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Okay, ordinance passes. Next we'll move on to item 12B. We do have a couple of appointments tonight, and the first one is 12B1.
The library board, and we have Liz Barbosa.
Yes. So the library board is short, had a board member to resign their position. And so, working with the library, Alison Beasley, Director Beasley and the team, identified an enthusiastic candidate within the city of Kankakee, lives in the sixth ward, if I remember correctly, in that area. And talked to her last week and she's excited to be a part of the board and help keep that library moving in the direction that they're moving. So, I'm looking for a motion for the appointment of Elizabeth Barbosa to the library board.
I'll make the motion.
So, go ahead, Victor. Go ahead, Victor.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second for Alderman Cobb's. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Ms. Barbosa, if you would like to stand up and... I know that on behalf of City Council, we're excited to have you join the team, and more importantly, I think Director Beasley is extremely excited to have you on the board. So, thank you. Next, we also have another appointment for the Kankakee County, well, item 12B2.
Okay. The Kankakee County Public Building Commission, we have Jeff Kincaid.
So there was an opening for that position. Mike Kincaid was, has been serving on that board. He moved to Bourbonay. We've always tried to have Kankakee residents serve on our boards and commissions. And so that opening came up, and Jeff Kincaid is a former alderman, resides in the 2nd Ward, and has agreed to serve on the Kankakee County Public Building Commission. So I'm looking for a motion for an appointment.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And we have a motion from Alderman Osanga. We had a second from Alderman Swanson. Is there any questions or comments?
He's a very good golfer on our Tuesday night only.
It's when the meetings are. No, I'm just kidding. Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osanga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Appointment is approved. We do have an opening on the planning board still. So if you have anybody that would like to serve on the planning board, we are still looking for a appointment to that board also. So if you do, please get ahold of myself or even Mr. Hoffman. We'd like to fill that sooner than later. If they have somebody unfortunately has an illness or a job or something, it starts to limit the number of people that can attend a meeting. So we're looking for an opening there also. Okay, we've already done motions and resolutions. We do not have a need for executive session. So we will move into item 17, and that is City Council Member Comments. Alderman Marzak.
I was contacted about a building, the J.J. Ruffles out there on 4552. My understanding, unless it's been changed, it's in county control. But they, I don't know, they tagged it, wrote all over it, but it's been a dilapidated building and, you know, pretty close to, you know, good development on 308. So I don't know, you know, if we can maybe push that along. You know, I guess the guy's an out-of-town owner, but it's looking pretty bad out there. And it's, you know, we got prime development going on there, and, you know, it's just a small piece that could be developed. But, you know, it's right in the heart of our development out there.
So it is, it is in, it's not in within the municipal limit, corporate boundaries. It is in the county of Kankakee. That would be, I believe, is that out of township or Kankakee Township? I think that's...
I believe it's Kankakee.
Yeah, but that's, so that's within their jurisdiction. So code enforcement unfortunately in our cannot do anything to it. But I will talk to the county about it. I do know that the land bank, which is made up of county appointments and city appointments, had discussed that building at one point, and maybe that's a way that they could tackle that property to do something with it. So, but we'll need some help from the county to address that. And I'll make that call. Alderman Jones?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I just want to give a little update coming from the east side. Man, I'm telling you, if you haven't taken a look over there, the Ricky Rocket thing is rolling. I mean, it is just exponentially moving and they're doing a great, they're doing a great job over there also with the dispensary. I believe all the underground and everything is done, and I'm excited about it. I want to thank Ron O'Connor for the great job that he did with the bowling alley. He did a tremendous job. I made a statement earlier, I was just being, I was just being greedy. But anyway, he did a wonderful job taking that down, and he didn't really hurt the city. And I just want us to be aware of that. What he did for the city was real good, and we appreciate what he did, and hopefully we can continue to build upon what's going on on the east side. Also, for the constituents that are listening, the 4th Tuesday, I believe it's Tuesday, yes, I believe it's 4th Tuesday, we'll be having our Medicare Association meeting at 6:00. So for all the constituents that have any concerns, anything, come on, and we'll be at the Lusso Center at 6:00 PM on Tuesday in the ward. And I believe, I believe that... All right. All right, thank you so much.
Alderman Malone Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, I had been getting a lot of calls about Route 50 coming through the city and wondering if the state is going to take care of those roads anytime soon. They've really gotten bad, the one ways, Indiana and Harrison, they are really bad. And, you know, we just get so many people having car problems from the roads here. And I was just wondering, do we have a time schedule or anything about getting those roads taken care of?
Yeah, I'll verify with Neil, but it's still a ways off. So if you notice this past summer, IDOT, we had a pre-development meeting with them, a pre-construction meeting with them. They just started the surveying and engineering, and probably saw a lot of stakes and paints along the summer here. So they're just putting that together now. But the reality is, the construction is probably not going to be till 2024 at the earliest. They've still got another year of engineering to get that all done. They're not just going to resurface the road. They are actually, from curb to curb, they are going to not only tear up all the asphalt, they're going to tear up the underlying rock and gravel and redo all that. They're actually going to be basically building a brand-new road, like you would be building on a grass field from Grinnell Road all the way down to Jeffrey, minus a little bit of area that was done by Skylar Avenue and the bridge there. They won't bust that up there, but in front of River Street there, that'll all be 100% redone. You are right, the roads are in horrible shape right now. You feel the bumps. One of the things I was going to talk to Mr. Lopez about was, we did buy that new machine. Can we go in some of the, we don't want to spend so much money there because the state's going to fix it all for us. It's about a $6 million project. But can we go next spring and hit some of the worst areas with our tar and chip machine along with some of the pothole things? Because it is something we're going to have to live with for about another two years before the state will be redoing the road. They figure they have two years of engineering. It will include some sidewalks, some new lighting, a lot of different things, but it's probably 24, at the earliest, probably 24, 25 project.
But I was just wondering if they could, you know, do some work on it before that time?
So with the state roads and stuff, they're not going to do a whole lot there. They're going to defer to our DPW, and they're going to say some of the motor fuel tax funds that we get is, we need to use our money for pothole and patch repairs. So we'll have to use our tar and chip machine to make it last a little bit, so. It's frustrating, but, and then that will be, when they do do the road, it's going to be as bad as Hobby, because they've talked about they'll have to do one lane at a time, take two lanes down the one lane. They're expecting a summer for each road, so probably a two-year project. It's, but it's quite a bit there that they're looking to do. But we think, we've talked to them, that curve along Valspar there, that area there that doesn't have any curving, doesn't have any sidewalks, we're trying to get all that built into it with some additional lighting and stuff too. But we're just, we're going to have to patch it ourselves as we go along with it. And Mr. Lopez, am I missing anything? We're kind of responsible for fixing potholes on state routes through our MFT, correct?
Yeah, we're, we, to minor areas, someone reached out to me earlier about a speedboat on the road, and that's something that we just, our apartment, there's like a wall by Valspar, if you call it a speedboat.
Supposed to be no.
That's just something that we can't do, that's a major, that'd be a major, the potholes, shoulder work, that's us.
So I'm hoping when we bring the machine back out, when we have the warmer weather, that they can go and fix some of the worst of the worst. And I know that everybody come this spring is going to want that machine in their ward quickly, because everybody's got alleys, everybody's got streets, everybody's going to want, I mean, that thing will probably get used more next year than we know what to do with, but maybe we can start with some of the major thoroughfare there to take some of the relief off. But it is, yeah, I would love to see it be done sooner, but realistically, they're telling us 24, the soonest, maybe 25, so. Alderman Prude?
Oh, I was same-page deal, so we, we thinking alike right now.
Yeah, we haven't had an update from IDOT since me and Neil met with them, I think, October, no, it was actually last summer. We'll try to get another update from them. Neil couldn't be here tonight, being a Tuesday night, he had other commitment, but we'll get an update before they're at, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Alderman Crawford?
Thank you, Mayor. This Tuesday coming up, January 24th, we will be having an ordinance meeting, and I will get out everyone's packet to them by Thursday, so you have time to look for the meeting on 24th.
Any other Alderman comments? Okay? Is there any department head comments? Okay? I'll keep mine short. I did want to remind everybody, we do have, it's been a while, but we will be having a committee, the whole meeting on Monday at 5:30 here in the council chambers. If you can make it, I think it's pretty important because we've got a lot of requests for ARPA money, and we've got to make some decisions on what we're allocating, what we're not allocating. And moving forward, we did make a recommendation out of ESU tonight to bring to the Committee of Hall for some sewer work for the city of Kankakee, so that'll be on the agenda with a lot of other things. So I know it's a lot of meetings, but we need to, we'd spend since September, since we've met as a committee of the whole. So if we can do that, that'd be great. I want to echo on the Ricky Rockets. If you looked over there, they are moving quickly. They've actually got steel structures that have been delivered to the site. My understanding where they're at, they expect that the dispensary will be under roof and built by April 1st, and then they will turn it over to the dispensary to spend the next 45 days for doing interior build-out. The Ricky Rockets, they're expecting that in May, they're expecting that the structure and that should all be under roof by the end of March, and that by May, Ricky Rockets will be up and operating, running. You can see they did put down a binder asphalt in some areas. It's not the full thing, they at least wanted to get that in there. And then the road will be completed in early spring also. So they're on a very, very quick time schedule. They are moving quickly, so we're happy to see that. And then just Hobby Avenue, again, we just kind of have to preach some patience. It's down to one lane right now. It is northbound and southbound. It was, at first, we thought it was going to be run direction. They did put up the traffic signal. That'll be up there for a while while they finish the water line. We're waiting, Nikor Gas is then going to have to get in the street and move the gas line, so it's going to be similar to what you're seeing now with the water line being moved. And it's another project. When it's done, it's going to be very nice. We did get some good news. Neil informed me last week that the grant funding that he had applied for, for the railroad crossing, the KS and B railroad crossing, so that is the one that is kind of in the middle of Hobby there. He had applied for a grant to get that to be a better, we'll call it railroad crossing intersection, and we did get that, we were awarded, the city was awarded that grant. So that will also be upgraded as part of the Hobby Avenue project. So both rail crossings should be pretty much state-of-the-art rail crossings along with Hobby Avenue. But again, this is going to be a two-year project, and it's caused a lot, even, the other day, I was cutting over and forgot that the street was dead-ended and you couldn't get on it, and I was trying, I was on the wrong side of the tracks and had to do a U-turn, and, but it's going to be a pain for a while, but I think the results when it's all said and done will be nice, so. With that, I don't have anything else.
Mayor?
Yes?
You and I talked a couple of weeks ago about 308 exit and the 312 exit. Could you explain that a little bit to the other aldermen?
About what the timeline and different things?
Well, they're going to do 308, and you said, why aren't we doing 312?
So we have, I have met with some of our legislators, both Representative Haas and Senator Joyce. So right now, exit 308, so let's back up. So exit 312 is in Phase 2 engineering. That's a good thing. And there's actually a public meeting coming up here about, they're going to be doing the retaining sound walls along I-57, so the houses that back up to the interstate, you see it quite often up north, where you see these 28 and 32-foot walls that kind of block the traffic. That's part of the overall reconstruction there. But they have not placed that on the letting for construction yet. The state has allocated for the 2023 through 2028 lettings. On that letting is exit 308. They're in Phase 1 engineering of redoing exit 308. They're not in Phase 2, and they've already allocated funding for it before 2028. I have asked both legislators, I have asked IDOT, and reached out to them and said, listen, I'll be greedy, I want both interchanges done just as much as everybody else does. But quite frankly, 312 is a priority over 308, and it's not even on the letting yet. They said they'll have another round of 24 through 29 lettings, and hopefully it can make the 29 letting. But they understand that, I've kind of stressed, I'd like to see it flipped. I'd like to see 312. The problem is, is what I've been told is, 312 is going to be very, very expensive, probably well over $100 million, where 308 is probably 50 to 60 million or so. When you put that much resources, everybody wants their interchanges and their bridge and overpasses done and everything, it's going to eat up the nine districts that make up this area for probably a year or two years. And so a lot of other communities that are fighting for the same things that we're fighting for are going to have to be put off. So they understand it. IDOT did apply for a federal grant. We put a letter together for that, and they're pushing that through. They said it's not the easiest grant to get, but they did apply for exit 312. We did show that the city of Kankakee has invested easily over $12 million of its own money into that area within a quarter mile, through Eastridge Drive, through Hobby Avenue, through Ricky Rockets, through some of the other developments over there, to show them that the city's got some skin in the game already, and that it's a very viable interchange, not only for our industrial park and our retail, but also access to get to, quite frankly, it's a major access to get I-65 into Indiana and to get to I-55 if you're cutting through over to Dwight. So hopefully, they've heard us, they're all working, but it's like everybody, everybody wants a piece of the pie and they want the puzzle, and when you start dealing with funds that much, it's kind of getting, I kind of aligned it to doing your house, okay? Everybody wants to redo their kitchen, and you hear the horror stories, you think it's a $15,000, and it's $40,000 later when you do your kitchen, so it's easier to go do the bathroom for $2,000. And so you start doing all the small projects in your house, and you ignore the big one because it's a costly, and that's kind of what it is here. We do have our representatives, and IDOT, they are aware that we really are asking, quite frankly, begging for 312 to be a priority over 308. Not that we don't want to have 308 done, but for us, that's a priority, so. Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion to adjourn at 8:01?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Prude? We have a second? Oh, hang on, before we get to second, hang on. Do we have a comment?
Yes, I have a comment.
Okay, before we get to our second, go ahead, Alderman Brown. The bell almost hit.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm from a large family, 13 of us, and for the first time, my older brother overruled me. I was supposed to write a speech and say goodbye to you guys, and my brother said, and not the president, so I don't have to do your own speech. And he made sure that basically what you need to do is thank people that help you and walk out and say goodbye. And I'm going to follow his advice, I'm going to do that. And I want to say to you guys, my colleagues here on the floor, if I tell you that it's been all fun working with all of you guys, then I'll be lying. So I lie. It's been fun. It's been fun. For over 20 years, I've had a ball. I've sat here, and I've looked at many of you, and I've worked with many of you, and it's been a pleasure. I've had distinct pleasure of working for four administrations. That's the Don Green administration, and I would like to thank each and every one of his department heads, his staff, for letting me be me. Also like to thank Nani Epstein for everything that she's done. I mean, I really got close to her. I can't take her and I started just about the same time on the city council. I can't tell you how much I appreciate working with her, and I want to thank her and her staff for everything. Mayor Curtis, I want to thank you. You've been, you've been more than I expected. I mean, I appreciate that. That's really good, and I think going out under your administration mean a lot to me, and thank you for helping me get Francine Drive and Ricky Rocket off the floor. That means a lot. I also want to thank Chester Wells Armstrong. Now, I'm going to tell you, Chester Wells Armstrong would always be my favorite because I worked with her as a teenager. So it goes more than just, more than just another person. I mean, I think I helped her when she was a teenager, when she needed to help the most. And if you ever did that, that person, when you see them succeed, even small, it means a lot to you, and it stays in your heart. So she will always be my favorite. Now, I got to thank Stephen J. Hunter. Stephen J. Hunter taught me how to be alderman. I can be a bad one. He didn't teach me all of that, but he let me be me, and I appreciate that. But the person, one person I had to thank more than ever, and that's that guy back there, Theodore Spade. For some reason, he tricked me into being a politician and get elected in office and being part of Kankakee Valley Park District. Something I love, and I always loved working and being elected with the Kankakee Valley Park District. That was my first elected position, and it reigned dear to me. I can't tell you right now how I feel because after 20-some years, sitting here in this seat, looking over here, you guys mean a lot to me, and you guys would be in my heart for remaining there my life, because it's just like a basketball team, when you graduate from that team, the guys there with you and fought with you means more to you than any other time. I'm sorry, Stacy, I should thank Angelina Dumas also, and you. You've been perfect. Thank you so much. But lastly, I'm going to say this, I have a person that I've been with for 52 years, and every time I wanted to be mean, every time I tried to have an attitude, I remember her saying, "Okay, Brown." And that calmed me back down. If I did something to offend you guys, it was in the spirit of, I love the city of Kankakee. It was nothing personal, and I never took anything personal, because that's not what I do. My father taught me a long time ago, don't worry about accolades, accolades last five minutes. What you do, let your work reflect what you do and what you accomplish. Now, years from now, I hope when people look at Ricky Rocket, I hope, and look at Francine Drive, I hope they say, well, Alderman Brown has something to do with that. I'm leaving not because I lost the election. I'm leaving because I want to pay back to a wife I've had been married to for 50 years and have sacrificed for me. And I don't know how long I got, but the fact of that is, I want to give some time to her, and I want to work with her, and hopefully I can pay back half the time and the sacrifice that she made for me.[1679.82] Even when I didn't have money for campaign, I never raised money for campaign, I used my own money. She made sure of that, and I just want to say thank her so much on this floor. I want to thank all the people in the seven wards, I want to thank the people in the city of Kankakee. I want to thank you guys, because there have been so many kind words who said, oh man, you're going to be missed, I know, I'm going to be missed for five minutes, but that five minutes is going to mean a lot to me, it may not mean much to you, but it's going to mean a whole lot to me. So I just want to say, it's been a ball, guys, it's been a ball. I leave, I'm not crying, my brother said, you're going to break down and do that, man, but I said, no, you, you gave me orders not to. I got to think what other person too, and I know I'm holding you guys a little longer than I intended, but there was a lady by the name of Margaret Donnigan, she was the mother of Jerome Combs, and if anybody knows Jerome Combs, detention system's named after my nephew. She was the kindest person in the world, she loved George Ryan. George Ryan is the person that I liked the most, because when I worked with him at Kankakee Valley Park District, he never had an attitude, and he, he had people coming after him from left, right, underground, above ground, but he kept his eyes on the destiny, whatever he wanted to do, he had a goal, he kept his eyes on the target. I'm going to leave that with you guys. Whatever you do, remember this, keep your eye on the development of Kankakee, don't let the attitude, don't let, don't let, I know we've all been raised in certain times, certain ways, we got certain beliefs, include everybody, include everybody in the development of this town. I truly believe, if the west side and east side look alike, the north side and the south side look alike, you have a city that growth and people, and people will live here, and they want to stay here, and they're going to love it like I love, like I love it. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much, I'm going to miss you guys, and you'll never see me talk this much again, but it's been fun. Mayor, thank you, thank you. Councilman.
Good that I have a motion to adjourn.
I'm glad we held up the second one there, so, do, do we get, are we going to get like four or five more passionate speeches? No?
Brother will let me do it.
You, we've got your, we've got several more meetings, correct? Okay, all right, we had a motion from Alderman Prude, and we have a second from Alderman Brown to adjourn, we're going to correct the time at 8:10. As an eight minute speech, just so you know, that's good. All in favor? Close, thank you, everyone.